All right, I want to thank you all for joining us. It's nice to see such a full house. There's meetings here and there where we get one or two with the audience. So it's nice to have an audience for once. We appreciate all taking the time out to be here tonight with us. Today is May twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. We are here for a thousand people school, school board regular meeting. The approximate time right now is six twenty-nine. I would like to go ahead and call this meeting from order. I'm sure can we please get a roll call?
Member Concha, here. Member King.
There.
Secretary Trujillo.
Here.
Vice President Spray.
Here.
President Flotis.
Here. At this time, we have item C, the pledge of allegiance. If you could please stand. Item E, our magic ultimate statement. It is respectful to recognize the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous people and their traditional territories. We acknowledge that we are the fourth home of the red will people within the original territory of Palos Quebque. This acknowledgement will oblige as a reminder to our ongoing efforts to respectfully recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the red will people whose land and water we benefit from from this great valley today. Item E is approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any proposed amendments or changes to the meeting agenda from the board or should we begin?
No. That's not I.
No.
There are none. I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a second for Vice President Cynthia. So I'm working to please move on to the role.
Member Concha?
Yes.
Member King.
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo.
Yes.
Vice President Spray.
Yeah.
President Flotis.
Yes.
You're in yes.
Before we get the meeting started, I would like to acknowledge our newly arrived Superintendent Dr. Antonio Megan. He comes from us, comes to us from Edinburgh, Texas, and he brings with him many years of experience in the educational field. I would like to ask Dr. Megan to introduce himself and if he has any words that he can say, please do so.
Well, President Flotis and more members, I'd like to thank you all for, I said you all because I think that's right. I was supposed to say you all. But I'd like to thank the board for entrusting me and the children of our district house. And I had a chance to visit the campuses yesterday and got a chance to see the wonderful staff that we have and the students are going to just take a few pictures and speak with them. And so I'm looking forward to the future. It's very bright. There's a lot of opportunities and we're going to move forward and we're going to move forward together. Thank you, Governor Megan. Thank you.
They're moving right along. Item F, our presentations. We are here tonight in the wonderful campus of Orozco del Norte and I want to give the Principal Dr. Anthony Medina for hosting us along with his staff and students. So at this time, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Medina, right at F-one of Orozco del Norte presentation.
All over the board, members of the board, Superintendent Megan, colleagues, and guests, welcome to our great staff, for a great staff and chance. Today, we had field day and just a few hours ago, we had that entire field full. It looked like the house closet during the test as well. And just to see the kids out there and have a school, we had these and went all day long. It's like they're just kind of engaged by themselves. So welcome everyone. We appreciate your time there. First of all, I just want to say that there are some tangibles and what they spend a little attention to make sure that the campus is clean and ready. I know we do a good deal of work. We appreciate making stoppages, but they did all the fine detail work and you want to make sure the campus is ready for you. I said one thing, another shout out. I always like to say that I've been enjoying the field with the bigger since the school's open and I think this year and I've always been in the main, he's kind of one of my principals that kind of pop each other out of the balance of top of him. And he said we were really good at it. I think it's kind of good in my school. So I want to give a little bit of credit. That's one of the conditions that's I think I'm thinking about now and it's I think people retired as they had an opportunity to go away a lot and those guys, I think I give them a little bit of time as well. And so there are a couple of patients that we have at our school are going to be a first big position for teachers retiring and then also John retiring. So the people don't stay at our schools, the great technique is there. So great God, I mean, sure, teachers, I think consistency with having in classrooms is beautiful. And regarding that, this has been a busy week. We started off Monday with our habits celebration. We celebrated academics. We celebrated censorship and also staff with attendance. And we made sure that the usual honor that I am, we do feel that we pushed it into quite a bit or as you know, we also take time to make sure that we honor them for the worth of the year and also give the teachers credit to make sure that we honor them as well, all the hard work they've put into the school as well. Tuesday, we had our Kinder fifth grade celebration. And so the gym was completely packed with parents and our our staff and our kids. And it was a wonderful thing to celebrate student success. And I don't think it was a dry eye. Our captain of the gym, his parents are happy about the progression of the kids and knowing they're prepared to go to middle school and ready for that tradition. They say that there was five life-changing events. One of them is at middle school to actually no, it's middle. So it's a pretty big deal. So we try to wait to prepare them. And our kids, our students are very reprimandious. Their classes are different, but this is a reprimandous type. We are, our kid teacher is one that personally especially one of the best in the district. Her score are always up there at the very top of the, at the heap. And there were chips coming in, sometimes no preschool and they come in, they leave that class rate in first grade. So we're proud to have some teachers. And also we've been at our teachers a great role because that teaches our kids to be ready when they want to push back. That's a very important position. So we have a key piece in our school and that environment. Today was actually a large day too. We had the field day. It wasn't like this, even before I died, but we always feel like things like field day or plays or even field trips. Those are the things that kids remember at schools and you want to make sure that when kids leave our school and they're here, that they understand the importance of school. It's important that there's also time to have a good time. Today, we went with basically, we had a good time. We had a growing family committee for our staff and they made our cotton candy and we made snow cones and we better our parents were here and it was wonderful. We had spent all the campus. It was a wonderful day and that's part of my job. I know you feel proud to be the principal of the school because that's the time you've been a parent since. So we're very proud of that as well. We also want to talk about the family income index grant that we received from the head. I won't believe that we didn't see that grant, but we had to believe our staff and our staff had decided that one of the important help for school that we're really helping with is is emotional, the behavioral help for our students. And we know right now that there's a lot of things going on in the country and in our, either whole state or our community. So our teacher felt wrong that the funding that granted go to getting a counselor at campus to help our kids and have someone here to talk to them. And there's someone who gave me the worst of conservative chips to talk to. The division's about ninety-two percent of the funding went to that position and about ten percent for after-school programs. We're very proud of those. First year, the community schools grant available in our after-school programming. And we had our staff members who have been running the program. So we wanted to make sure some of the funding from that grant went into the after-school program. So we ended up funding to pay for our teacher salaries. So that's a part of our of our progress. We want to make sure we do next year for our nurturing center that we have clothing. We have items for students to have an opportunity to have things of meaning at home and we'll have people for the campus. So our, our, our schools are changing and we're becoming more aware of what students need and that's a part of our school. Tomorrow, the second, third grade class, we're going to kind of hear. It's kind of pretty cool to go the second day, first of the weds, but I want to tip my hat off for our teachers who take the kind of that. Beginning in May, the kids, they all got to the ice skating. We've done the river, the birds. We've done trips to the town. We truly believe that you know, reading out books or even watching videos are important, but when you have hands-on, object-based learning, we know that kids learn better than that. That's one area that I think in our school that we really excel in. And kids are like, they travel, they see games and it's a wonderful thing when kids get out and even doing things at campus. So we, we are pretty sure the teachers should take that to the next level. And lastly, I want to say, you know, we're really proud of our staff. You know, I, I tell them all the time that I'm the principal. I think the bookstop to me, but it's part of my profession. We all play, even playing field. We're all the same. I don't feel like any more important here. I actually feel the staff, the science students should go forward past with the middle school. The teachers at the school are amazing. They're like sisters. They, they, they plan together and they never really turn down. Like, you guys, what's part of the school that always stands out that no one in the school ever lets it turn down? And that's a part that makes my job so much, but also very proud of the fact that we got teachers to care about these kids. So we just want you to know the kids in terms of what those are all being here, they're loved. And the parents, we know, we know the kid's name. We know the parent's name, even though it's far as anybody. And so we're very happy to have that connection with our community. But I know tonight that this is the only way that we invited our students to come up and speak to you. And we all want to give a little bit of courage to do that. But I want to say to the end and inside me, our fifth grade students are giving shout out to the whole school. These kids are wonderful. And they're here to share some information with you. And I want to thank the students for preparing them for this presentation. So again, welcome everybody for Kathy, she being here. And this is the most amazing thing that people support me, you know, you can handle. But it's nice to have a governor's focus here for that. So welcome to the room and thank you for this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Gilroy, I'm a third grade teacher here. And also I'd like to make mention Martinez and Sonia Omera, our fourth and fifth grade teacher. For helping prepare our students to be able to be here tonight and be able to share so eloquently. So if you guys would have opened, join them and just make your turns.
I am changing now. This is being very rude. And we are all here to find you dollars or money. So I was thinking about that now, of the first person, the amount of teachers you're dealing with, I have to give that back. And third grade, because they're instituted, created, we remember as a multiple initiative, which really helps us in our later groups. In this one, we have to start it and we're waiting to prepare the middle school.
Hello, my name is Mayel, and I will be presenting how our representative has helped our students with social emotional learning and their emotional field. I have been here since V K and believe that social emotional learning has helped me a lot and believe that it has helped build up and make my social life up. Another thing I would like to add is that I'm very grateful for this, for this school and all the people that help support all of the programs and learn. Based on what I've said, what I've stated so far, I can say this has been a great school. And they have, they have taught their students well with the best of their power, which helped me a lot.
Hello, I am Lisa Jamie, and I am a fifth grader here at Orozco del Norte. I came to Orozco when I was five and once I got older, I figured out that people participated in after-school and in-school activities. So one day I decided to sign up for robotics and basketball. Joining these activities helped in a lot of ways, such as physical fitness and coding. Once I got, once I joined, I figured out that there are more activities that help you grow in your subjects like ELA, math, and science. Then I joined the after-school program this year, which have helped me in math, ELA, reading, and science. I would like to thank the teachers who wanted to help in these activities. I believe the after-school, the after-school activities helped the students of Orozco del Norte. Finally, we thank you for helping us make the, the after-school activities and support our school.
So where are you guys going to school next year?
The middle school.
What are you guys looking forward to next year, the biggest thing?
I think I'm looking forward to all of the activities that they have at the middle school, the helping dark and very clean. So looking and visiting.
I will be looking for, forward to all the programs that they have for us. Notice that I give you the best of their teams. I will be looking forward to see my sister there and using her classes.
What are you going to miss about Orozco del Norte?
The teachers.
Also the opportunities and then all the good things that are happening through the
all of my memory there. Since from the beginning to the
Wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you.
What a wonderful presentation. Thank you, students, for being so courageous and getting up there. You did wonderful. I think when you graduate from high school and after you finish college, you come back and you're a school board member. Or a teacher. You know, superintendent or superintendent. We wish you the best in all your endeavors and just want you to remember to have goals and to always focus on those goals.
Thank you.
And do your best. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Medina. This is the order here so much.
Yeah.
The item F-two under presentations is CTE, how PE curriculum review and possible approval represented by Mrs. Carla Martinez.
President Flotis, members of the board, Superintendent Megan, U N M, U N D members. We are presenting this evening the CTE, P T P, L M P, adoption recommendations for the district. Every year we have an adoption cycle for a different subject. And so this year it is the CTE or career technical education, health and P E adoption. And I'm actually, I'm going to turn this presentation over to Mr. Greg Rayal. For the last semester, he has worked at the district office. He is getting his administrative license and he had to do intern hours. And so he came up to district office in order to learn how the district administration works. And so one of his project was actually to run the adoption for this year. And so I'm going to let him go ahead and proceed with the presentation.
Thanks. Governor Flotis, number four, Superintendent Megan, and guests, thank you. Again, out of the hundred and sixty-two hours that I completed this year of internship, this is definitely one of the more tedious and hard to organize just because career technical education, helping P E at the most secondary level and trying to organize this to one or for people and in such a kind of manner was a really rewarding experience. And I had the opportunity to be part of that process for the math adoption during the online COVID year. So it was much different during the live setting and talking with staff throughout the sites. And so I'm going to get started. Double benefits to career technical education. And why I really want to focus on getting as much of the materials that we look for in the classroom and strong curriculum is for the benefits that CTE provide to our school sites. When we look at graduation rates and from the A C S, the most high schools that have a career technical education program, see graduation rates around the eighty-five percentile or eighty-five percent, which is much higher than the national average. We look to reach more adverse students with these courses and keep them in extended programs like Welding and Woodshop, one, two, three, and four culinary like Mr. Arshad Manyan here has students throughout an entire program. And we look to retain students and would that helps with the funding, just in the in the finance meeting with that S U G formula that helps with us and the retention of students with these programs. And more importantly, it deepens this community ties that we have and helps our students obtain real-world and career skills on top of that, like the networking that they're able to build, the traveling that a lot of our students get to do, or a lot of the competitions that are associated with these courses. Definitely helps them see a whole different part of the world and expand their horizons outside of the Taos district and Taos community, which is definitely rewarding for us as teachers. And also we look at a better student engagement with your behaviors. We look at our adverse students and a lot of the different demographics that we have in students. Having that hands-on learning, like Dr. Medina just mentioned about that project-based learning, having whole courses and programs of study dedicated to building a skill set and earning certification really helps with that classroom management because it's, it gives more of that kinesthetic view and then ideology of learning for our students and for our students. Couple of the, um, group art, the lyric that we use really focuses on three main points when we're asking our teachers to select their curriculum and what are the materials that we have from the state provided this. High quality, high-quality instruction materials. We like to see, make sure that they're standard-based, that the level of rigor is there, that structured literacy and a cultural linguistic responsiveness in, in, into the text. When I say cultural and linguistic responsiveness, we want to make sure that the text that we use and the, the curriculum that we bring in is well-represented of many demographics, many demographics. But then the text is not just solely males doing construction and or something like that. We, we want to make sure that it's well-rounded and it shows exactly what we're looking for as far as the diversity of our students and the programs that we have and we want to represent in our district. We like community involvement and how these materials and how these curriculums help deepen those community ties that we were focusing on in the last slide. And lastly, the scaffolds and sports. Do these, do these texts flow within our M L S S sequence? Are they accessible to our Spanish-speaking students, our alone students, our exceptional, our exceptional student, special education students, our adverse students? And lastly, are they, are they more accessible in a multiple different ways and not just a textbook in the classroom, but do we have an online and online accessibility for all of our students? Oftentimes, and myself and Ms. Martinez, who work diligently with our campus learning management system, we always want to make sure that our students have multiple access points to all the curriculum that they receive in all four subjects and manage CTE. We can't control if a student has to leave school or if they extend a period of time, then we want to make sure that they still have technical access to those resources at all times. Using online access and having those connected with campus, we want to make it a one-stop shop for all of our students to receive better conditions. For instruction with appearance, we, one thing that we want to make sure where we focus on and why we really take the adoption process so seriously is because what we don't want is our teachers and our programs to have to rely on third-party materials or public materials like Teachers Day teachers that share my lesson. Oftentimes, when, when we're vetting those materials, they're not standard-aligned to what we're looking for and what the state of New Mexico is looking for. They don't possess the rigor and often it's just a very simple track lesson and assignment with less applicability and less connection to our community, which is what we want. So we want to make sure that our materials are focused and built around the students in house and in our house district and how we're going to be running them outside of there and not just having them work on simple simulations that don't really match what the rubrics are that we're looking for when we go through that vetting process. For our high-quality instructional materials, when, when we ask our teachers to look into those rubrics and then when we ask them to review some of the materials, we both, we ask them to focus on making sure that the materials are content-rich, that rigors, they're, they're fully accessible and accessible. Again, we'll jump on that multiple ways. That their culture development, their research-based, their standards aligned, and that there's a clear purpose and structure and pacing. That's more for the instructor side as well. As we have teachers moving into CTE or new teachers coming in, and we have an adoption, an adopted curriculum that they're coming into, we want to make sure that they have something to start and begin delivering that high-quality instruction for our students and give them, and then they'll there they grab their, their, their. We do face some challenges with our, with this adoption. The one thing that we will say is the, the list provided by P E B was very, very small. Didn't really have a full wide range of acceptable texts. Not all grade levels were represented, but so there was mostly middle school and secondary. Nine percent of the texts review the N F E B standards for approval and only two and a half met the C L R standards that we look for within the district. So it took a lot for our CTE teachers to look through those materials and build their little subcommittees of students and representatives within their school to really select the text that they want to make sure that they need as materials with what those small numbers, it was like finding a needle in any stack, but looking for these materials that they want and make sure we're going to be there because it's a six-year adoption. And we want to make sure that these materials that we select are going to be fully accessible and well-represented for all of them because they don't, we don't get this CTE adoption for the next six years. Next year is another component or another subject. So for our proposed adoption, we do have some middle school and high school courses that have a lot of the process and looking for different materials. Some of these are on the adoptive list and some of them are currently not adoptive list, which we do have on as well. Um, you guys can read this slide. Help computer applications and food and damage in science at the middle school are excellent. We never request meeting. At the high school level, the adoptive list, we have human child development and our educated rise or sorry, just human child development. As part of, is from the adoptive list, our educated rising teachers and our project lead the way that P L P W is our product lead the way classes, builder from the non-adoptive side. And I will say that with our, our biomedical science and our human body systems, Ms. Valdez and Ms. Christine Garcia, who are who are taking on the forefront of that project lead the way, is they're in year one of that, of this component. They've done a tremendous job. They have over sixty students in that program. They're moving, moving forward with the next step. And really getting students involved in that, in those biomedical pathways, which is a really awesome career pathway that we in Taos are always looking for, especially with the nursing program that we have and both are obviously, as I said, we wish into that nursing program in Taos. It definitely is a really nice segue and our students are really getting a lot of amazing handout experience. So continuing with this and looking at some of the reasons that they're going to be, we want to make sure that they're part of that adoption. Our computer science teacher and our A D computer science teacher are also going to be participating in project lead the way, rebuilding a computer essential, computer science essentials and principals program. The principal program is also B P approved as well on that, on that side. So if this are CTE standards, but it also fits the A D standards that we're looking for as well. So there was a lot of work to really dive into a lot of that text and really network and, and work with Ms. Valdez and Ms. Christine to get more acclimated to the project lead the way for those teachers that they, they build a strong community and really look into the materials that are going to sustain their courses and really build interest, build these kind of ways. Because ultimately, these CTE programs aren't just a one class and you're done. It's a two, three, four-year campaign that our students are looking for, build skills and hopefully enter a career setting or leave with a certification and add a skill set alongside with the graduation. So we look for, we, we look for the longevity of our, of these materials. We ask for, of the board to approve our, our request to purchase these items out of, out of the adoption process we have for our C T E teachers.
Thank you for your presentation. If you guys have any questions to be answered, are there any questions? What's the enrollment of nursery program right now among students per class?
The U N, the U N M Taos quarter. So on our non-traditional U N M students, that's around like twenty-five to thirty students each goal, each, each semester. So when I, when I top ten of three of U N M, I had about twenty-five to thirty students who are just specifically in the nursing program in my classes. So they're usually around that size and then it's probably gotten bigger since the, the update of all their, of their facilities. And we do have a large proportion of our students and of our graduating seniors who are pursuing maybe nursing, these either here in Taos or at U N M.
It's the state, the state. We have students who've gone through the CTE programs in Taos and then transferred that to other universities.
Great. Appreciate it.
And one thing that we do focus on with our CTE courses and with the, with the adoption is looking at courses and pathways that we have at the high school that are relevant to the job force and to the workforce and the high-stakes careers that they can obtain from that are located in the area. So a lot of how our matrix and how pathways are built are looking at the big picture of what is our community, what is our state really looking for in professionals going into the workforce? And where is the best paper, what this board, what we can provide from our educational staff like that to four thousand.
Then I can add, the CTE programs are also supported by our Perkins funding, which is one of our federal programs. And this one's eager and our goal is to manage that for our secondary teachers. And so collaboration, we're, we're purchasing the curriculum, but then the materials, because CTE programs do require a large amount of materials that's coming in from our Perkins funding so that students have state-of-the-art resources and equipment so that they can go ahead and enter the workforce with that skill set and it's not dated skills or anything that they may use. So it's a collaboration we need to get to.
Good question. Is there any specific training that you
Great question. Is there any specific training that the teachers take to recognize the instructional interference?
I'm sorry?
Is there like a special training that the teachers take or how, how do they learn to recognize introduction and interference?
We provide a rubric and, and so that rubric lets them have an idea of what they're looking for along with the school, their list of, of. Of food material around P E B. And then a lot of our, a lot of our teachers through project lead the way or other. Professional development that they personally intended helps them as far as the curriculum that they, that they select. Along with the network that they use in other C T E teachers processing.
So the beginning of, if I can add, at the beginning of every adoption cycle, there is a training meeting that all of the staff participated. And we go over the, we talk about all of the things that were mentioned within the certification. What are the key components that they should be looking for? And then we also share that with our stakeholders who are participating. And we're lucky enough at the secondary level to include students. And on the process so that they can kind of look at, hey, I already went through this course, would this text have been more supportive for me and my learning? Thinking about their peers and the perspective of a student rather than just as a teacher. So that is one of the things the students learn about as well.
Right. And that would also reflect that the math and literacy within the texts.
Yes. And so, and I, I did want to mention that and thank you for, for bringing that up. One of the other big components and benefits of. Is that cross curricular connection between the structured literacy, the math components. Coming down the line, there, the, this year's current seventh graders, the class of twenty twenty eight. The state of New Mexico was, is allowing students to opt out about the two win take different C T style courses on math courses, some of them being. Computer science, computers or other notions and stuff. So having that connection really would not be building between those four subjects. And, and our C T programs and the pathways that we provide. It's only been a bridge and hopefully really focus on a, a better retention rate for a lot of students.
So thank you for this.
Well, President, those members are the ones who also in the commission. Ms. Martinez, for the future. I believe minors, something that would be considered.
That's the highest relevance there. The main topic wave, we have so many programs that are, are courses at the high school that they're looking at. The minors pathway as something that we can build in collaboration with U N M house. So.
Yes.
What, what comes to my mind is one of the conferences that we went to. We had a presentation of physics. On how it, how is that incorporated into, into this type of. Learning because it is huge and it is, it is one of the. I can't remember how they probably stressed the importance of it and how the application of it for students and. Anyway, I'll just let you expand on that if you have anything.
Then we, we do have, and we have, we have received. The physics in the classroom and I think that was a presentation that was presented to you guys earlier. Any year, our, our full science department, along with our math department at the high school and our science department at the middle school. Have all offered into physics in the classroom. And I can speak about it from the math department as a math department chair. We're, we're focusing on that as, and, and looking at that as ways to have students see. Real time data and real time algorithms come to life using different, using solar energy, using electric. When I'm engaged in a number of different, a number of, whatever the apparatus is claiming for. We're wanting to build our data literacy within the math department. That's going to help with focusing on those high stage science exams and really communicating on the reporting level of science. Having that structured build, that, that data literacy structure built within our math lessons is going to go to support our science programs and our C T programs.
And if I can add our clean energy program, which is a, another nationally recognized program. Incorporates a variety of the different science topics. So it's a C T E program, but it embeds. All of the different disciplines of science for the students to go ahead and apply as they explore clean energy concepts. So there's physics in there, there's chemistry, there's biology, environmental science. And so it's a C T E program. It wasn't part of our adoption, but again. A lot of our teachers, whether they're C T E science or math, worked closely together to help embed those different pieces. In, in the curriculum so that the students have a really robust experience.
Can I just add, I just see that, that. The outcome of this is that. They're learning the math, they're learning the science, but the application of math. And science with a hands on type of environment finds itself to, the kids engaging in learning. And because it's applicable. And, and thank you for that. I just. I'm glad they were doing that because it was really, I, I, I was very excited to see that what. What is coming to our, to New Mexico. That would be something, some kind of energizing event. That would just, that the children, the kids would really, really enjoy it because they all have attention.
Absolutely. And one thing that we really want to focus on, I mean, we, we can't stay away from. The, the retention scores and the proficiency scores of math that we receive and realizing that it's, it's a. It takes an entire school to help build those, build those and build increase of scores and, and build that proficiency. So. Having that more connectivity, that, that stronger connection in math in their C T courses and their science courses. Have that structure, literacy and, and all components of, of social studies to C T E to science. We really want to help. We want, we really want all those courses to help with those methods, the efficiency scores and, and to have those conversations. Candid and, and open about where we are and, and what programs we are really focused on to bring in who just the overall data itself and then just.
Thank you, President Torres. Are you Greg Ryan?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so, I'm so happy. Your reputation, we see you all I ever hear. People say, do you know who he is? He's such a good teacher. It's so nice to make your point. Thank you for your presentation.
Any further questions from the board?
Appreciate it.
I do have a question. So as we roll this out. Will we continue to. Be, are there any intentions to possibly maybe expand any further C T courses? Or is this maybe going to be the primary focus to turn out? We definitely want us to succeed. Have you guys thought of any additional avenues down the road or to maintain?
Yeah, one of those would be that the, the finance pathway. But we also, we look at what pathways we have and based on what high stage jobs and careers are available for our students. And we look at the, the certifications and the, the interests and the skill sets that our teachers, a lot of our teachers and our C T teachers. Come from a specified industry where they can lend their, their expertise in. And so. A lot of it is also depending on the personnel that we have. From year to year, fortunately enough that we have such a strong core C T teachers at both the middle school and high school to begin pushing things forward and. Teachers like Ms. Valdez who are in the science, and Mr. Leonard who were in our science department, but also C T certified. So they can begin pushing these paths.
And if I can add, we, a lot of the staff at the high school are actually dual certified. So they have a specific discipline certification as well as the C T E certification. Which allows them to be utilized in the matrix in both areas. So a lot of our science teachers are science and C T E endorsed. And then we have other teachers in other areas who have dual. Which allows them to be inserted into those C T E courses. And as Mr. Rial indicated, we, it depends on our staff and Taos High School is. It's a small school comparatively when we're looking at C T E programming compared to schools like. Rio Rancho or other C T hubs within the state. And so it's hard to build multiple programs. While because we don't have the ability to provide a program study. And so we can do singletons like a single course, but what we really want our students to have access to the series of courses that leads to. Internships in the community certifications, those pieces that are then transferable into a post secondary education setting or works directly into the community. So we're kind of limited with staff and their certifications, but the high school does a really good job of trying to. Build that based on the individuals that we have and the programs that we can go ahead and. And I just want to mention also, the programs that are adopting this year are not representative of all of the C T E programs at Taos High School. We have sustainable agriculture. We have welding, we have woodworking. We have our culinary program. We have all kinds of programs that aren't adopting either because they didn't need a text or they didn't find the text in the adoption. Materials that they thought was appropriate for their students. So there's a variety of courses that the students can take. It's just not indicated on the presentation this evening.
Thank you for your presentation on that. I'd also Mr. Rial for. Becoming a, becoming administrator. I think we're very lucky and blessed to have you within the district.
Thank you.
For your many hours of internship.
Oh, no, it's, it's, the better curve is definitely vertical.
Well, it's great to see you, the excellent teachers you've been able to meet. Doing all of your mission of being an administrator in certain districts. So thank you. So with that, it is an item for approval. I would like to make a motion for approval. The board, so would I make them a motion?
I'm motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you. For member Quoche, we have the motion for approval to the board.
One second.
We have a second from Secretary Tukio. Member Quoche, can you please call approval?
Member Quoche, yes.
Member Quoche.
Yes.
Secretary Tukio, yes. Vice President Sprague, yes. Senator Flores.
Yes. How exciting, great and ever.
Thank you so much.
Students are going to be very happy.
Absolutely. The work definitely doesn't stop now. As soon as we get the material line. Myself and Ms. Martinez and the teachers, they have to essentially go through probably some additional training to look at the curriculum. But also the integration part into our campus learning management system and making sure that all of those intricacies work. So our students and teachers have. Access from the moment they, they open up a separate campus page, so it's an access to ebook, writing the activities or virtual instruction. So the work is still. On the way until, you know, three hours, it's a really interesting work.
If you move to admin, you do agree to sub for some of that classes?
Oh, absolutely. I don't want to move to admin.
I think you're pretty, I heard you're a good teacher.
Well, you know, what you, what you both presented here, you know, gives our students. You know, a good career path for benefits them for the rest of their life and, and hopefully. Some of those students will return to our back to our community and be able to make a life here and also, you know. Through their education and their community. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is item. Is item F three, a recognition of Coach Arton Brayo. So. We got in our audience, a very esteemed individual, somebody that I have a high level of respect for. It's difficult to find the right words to speak. About somebody that is a, a published coach of Brayo. And who has given someone his time in our community. I want to thank Coach Brayo and I want to thank his family. For their time. You know, many calls to Brayo for someone who might not be aware of in their high school football coach. And, and he is moving on to. Bittersweet, what I want to say is. You know, I don't know anything better than Taos, but he's moving on a bigger, better teams. Moving on to, he's going to, I'm going to ask him to get over here and say a few things to me if he wants to, but he. He's going to be coaching at a larger school in Alpharetta. And I think that's a whole step up. When you're aspiring like Coach Brayo, you know, you always. Do everything you can. At, at the position that you have, to really kind of extend. And he has succeeded in that. And there's no other place to go but up for him. And Coach Brayo's been very successful in his tenure here at Taos High School. For those of you that are not aware, he brought us our first state championship in football. He's going to leave behind a legacy that will be remembered for generations to come. Coach Brayo. And he's not only a coach, but he's a mentor, he's a leader. I've seen him in action. He's a friend. He's a disciplinarian. And to many of the student athletes. And the students that walk the halls of Taos High School. He's like a father figure. Not only a father figure, but he's also become somewhat of a counselor to them. A good coach that's countless hours devoted to their program. And Coach Brayo gives and breathes a passion for student athletes. He gives and breathes a passion for football. And he lays and breathes a passion for success. Not only football. Has he. Inspired his students, but he's inspired them to be successful in life. Very impactful. And we, he's behind. Big shoes to fill and probably there is, the size of shoe you got. We're grateful for many years of devoted to our community, the district and our student athletes. I have the great honor of being able to play football against Coach Brayo in my high school years. Those are many years ago, you know, memories, probably a little bit fogged by the kids that Coach Brayo put upon us. Taos High when I played in my junior and senior year, we, we never beat Robertson High School. But we almost aspired to. You know, to get in a good game. And when I heard that Coach Brayo was coming to coach at Taos High School, I knew that we were, you know. Going to be a better team, somebody, a team that was original, that was going to be respected. And he brought that to us. He brought us a lot of success. He inspired many students. I've seen and spoken to some of those students. In my time as a school board member. I can honestly say that I love Coach Brayo and he's somebody that, that we were ready to miss. And it's like I said, bittersweet. And we wish him and his family the best of luck. I hope we'll visit and watch and play coach football. I'm glad I don't have to play football against him anymore. But Coach, we want to thank you and we have something here for you. They would like to present to you and your family. So it's the best year 2018, four A state football champions, Taos Tiger Football, Art of Rayo. Your leadership and dedication led Taos High School football to state championship victory. Thank you for your outstanding commitment and dedication to our student athletes. Taos High School, Taos Middle School Schools, 2015 through 2023. And real quick, Coach, that's not from the board and the district. We go from a super, former superintendent, superintendent, sort of one and superintendent Dr. Rayo, or I think Ms. Christine. And, and Tanya and the whole staff for making this possible. Come on, big guy. You know, you definitely probably had asked, you know, why am I, you know, just straight over. Because it's hard to think about what I'm. This, I know it's real, this, I know you know something. You know. President Flores. The board. Superintendent. Superintendent, they had, they had long. When I look back on my time here, it's something that smiles.
when I look back on my time here and something like smiles. Uh, I was born and raised in Los Angeles, you know, that. Taus. Taus. We learn how to be our, our best person, our best here professionals. Uh, yeah. We got all of our degrees here. I mean, I mean, I still know something. Taking twenty-two, fifteen tests to make sure I stay at Taus. Uh, I'll do it all over again, you know, between broken bones, uh, surgeries. Uh, countless hours within my family. I will do it again in a heartbeat for this community, this community, I owe it everything to, uh, you know. We had a miscarriage, community showed up for us. Uh, I got put on leave and community tried and brought me out of my dark place and support to, you know, get requested, you know. Something like that, but nothing beats the, the memory of walking out with the state championship game. Three hours before and the entire standard. You know, um, this is not goodbye, by anyone means. You know, this is important, it's also guys around us at the time. But, uh, I got two knuckles that will know where they were born. I got, I got, I got a couple of guys and, and we're gonna be back. These supporters, especially on, you know, we play on the same day, uh, first game of the season this year. So I'm gonna wear my orange and, uh, and black on the outside. I will have my shirt, my profession shirt on on the inside. That goes with me a lot of where I live. Yeah, they hired me to do a, a job in El Dorado, but they hired the job I did here at Taus, Taus. Everything I've done here will be going with me. Uh, I just can't say enough thank yous from the top to the bottom, superintendents, board members, principals, vice principals, uh, the middle school principals, elementary principals. I, the, the love that's good so far. Uh, of course, most of your stuff in here, um, I've seen a lot of it evolve. And then I went on to move here at, at the Robinson, you know, Coach Taylor, you know, uh, I, I've seen this community grow and the community has so much to offer. The school has so much to offer, has great homes, has great potential for, for great most structure for, skies up here. And, you know, and then, you know, we, uh, we went to college together, came to Taus together, we'll miss you on that. And, uh, I'm not trying to call him off personally, but I, I'd be very lucky one day to have a new shirt that I can, I start to work with. You know, and, uh, if I could ever do it at the Taus. Uh, I'm always a full one all the way, I'm only three hours away up and we're already back up here and how many of you should have worn them? But like, uh, President Flores said, you know, we play against each other, uh, uh, I was able to become the beneficiary of that one. But, uh, developed, they've developed a very good professional relationship where we're, we're able to talk and wants to, but now I have to call him Barney. But he didn't get sent, you know, when we went to South United State in his life, you know, we, we watched Taus Tigers win. And, uh, you know, it so happened, you know, you pack them your stuff to go somewhere else and we'd also be focused, so. This was pretty fun. So, as I said, I got your guys ready to bed, jumping, I already got it, you're all already got it. But particularly people, I'm super excited, they want to say it virtually. Well, I know where we're at, so crossing, I'm coming in anyway. But, you know, I, I think we can all remember a portion of our lives and teaching and everything there. But as you can see, I mean, the ripple effect, that you're providing the community is gonna be here for generations, so. While we have a little screen there, we have a community that we have in the district. Thank you so much, Coach, and we just don't have a.
So our, our next great achievement, the item F four, uh, recognition of former general superintendent, Ms. Renato Regón. Ms. Regón is, uh, very passionately, you know, and, uh, like I said, Coach Rayo, it's hard to find the right word to talk about somebody that you admire and have the utmost respect for, um. My daughter was a student of Ms. Regón nineteen years ago, or that's a lot of me. Like I said, first grade, we'll say fifteen years ago. But at that time, you know, uh, we sought out the best teacher at Ratchet Elementary. You know, when the parents wanting the best for, for your child, you know, we had a pool of youth dreams and got a daughter in Ms. Regón's class and that was probably one of the best things that had, that has impacted her life. And I'm forever grateful for Ms. Regón as being like a daughter's teacher. And I'm forever grateful for her big smile, the rain, of interest superintendent. And bridging the gap from past superintendent to Dr. Rayo. Uh, Ms. Regón will leave the legacy behind as retired as interim superintendent. She's a professional with high expectations and a very high level of integrity. Uh, Ms. Regón has a passion for education, a passion for her students and most of all, a love for her community. And is very lucky to have a woman such as Ms. Regón as an administrator for our district. She's a very young lady and she still has many, many more years of service and she sold truth to students. They went to district for a long time and we, we all did, they were working with us and we have the highest aspirations for her. I want to thank her for being the district as interim superintendent. And she is someone that we can all aspire to replicate and make her replicate. And with that, I would like to, uh, turn it over to, uh, our superintendent, Dr. Reagan, to say a few words.
So, uh, as new superintendent, I want to personally thank, uh, this one, my one. And in the commitment and dedication of this, this big organization, many staff members across the district the last couple of days, they have nothing like high, high deep respect and respect. And so I want to thank you personally because your commitment and dedication is also evident in the school administration. And that from me, my personal gratitude to you for allowing that some presence, so thank you very much, Ms. Regón. And I look forward to working as a team of these students.
But with that, we'd like to give, uh, Ms. Renato Regón, sorry we're not being afraid, but a certificate of appreciation. We, and I'm gonna say we, the school board, school district, superintendent, Ms. Christine, all the staff. We recognize Ms. Renato Regón for her outstanding dedication and invaluable service to the Taus Middle School District as interim superintendent, this day May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Now, this for you, and we also have this new momentum. And we have the board of the district, it's a patent for us.
You gentlemen are, but again, thank you, I have the honor to step in and fill the position of, and I'm superintendent and appreciated working with all of the staff and the board. It's great to do that every time and, uh, get to know each one of you and, you know, what are you, me, me for of the school district and you're absolutely right, I am there for my community and for our school district and definitely it has been wonderful to work with these past few days and look forward to continuing the hard work that has already started with the, with the school district. So thank you very much.
Okay, with all, with all of that, I'll back to business. Uh, next item on the agenda is item G, uh, public comment. Uh, this is the, uh, time on the agenda when anybody in the public has any concerns or comments uh, that they would like to bring forward to the board of the community and we open up the floor for anybody wishing to speak. Uh, with hearing done and seeing done, we will go ahead and move forward to public comment. And we will move to item H, district update. We have two items under district update, item H one is our superintendent report, which will be presented by Dr. Antonio Leo Junior. And item H two, administrative reports will follow. And that is a, a, a portion of the, the board agenda where the board is presenting with administrative reports that they are able to review and look if the board has any questions or regard or comments regarding those reports, they can bring it forward at that time. So at this time, I'll turn it over to our superintendent for Taus Middle School, Dr. Antonio Leo Junior.
Well, President Flores, I represent the board, uh, this is my third day of summer. My report may be just a little brief, but I can tell you this. I've had the great opportunity to meet a lot of our staff, new street, as well as our guests. In fact, I was here just yesterday afternoon. Uh, it is great to see the wonderful things at the health of the area. But it's also a red hope for the future and there's so many possibilities, so much potential that we tap into. And I'm excited to see that, but having said that, uh, my report is mostly about the communication and the mentions that we're looking forward to making and the collaboration across the district to increasingly improve the attendance and scores across our district. So I want to let you all know that that is a synopsis of my report. I will let you know the next one, I will have more definitely, but, uh, thank you all again for entrusting me in the mission.
Thank, thank you, uh, superintendent, thank you. Uh, item two is our administrator reports that have been provided by our administrators. I want to thank all our administrators for providing, uh, their reports to the board. Uh, if there are any questions or comments, uh, from the board regarding the administrative reports. Uh, now would be the time to ask of our administrators. Uh, if you so choose and want to reach out to the superintendent, I would ask the board to go ahead and email a doctor and if you have any questions, comments or concerns regarding the, the reports. Any items to speak of?
I, I do have a, a couple of questions, um, like, Mrs., Mrs. Winters, excuse me, please, you? Yes, I have a question, I read in the report that we have, uh, twelve letters of retirements and resignations. Um, I wanted to ask of the district if there's any possibility that we can acknowledge those individuals that are retiring. At some point, uh, I think that, uh, it, it is, uh, due and for those individuals that have given up their time in many years, um, I would hope that maybe at some point we could, should we send out a letter of appreciation? I don't probably try to get them all here and if I are retired, at least. So with those, uh, while retirements or resignations, uh, how do we plan to move forward and fill some of those vacancies? But I don't know, asking you to give us a, elaborate to speak at all, or if you could just share kind of maybe the next steps we're going to.
Sure, very, uh, good, 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 Dr. Nate will introduce the board, colleagues, community members, students. And of, uh, press time last week, it was, uh, well, uh, as of today, I believe we have two more, uh, resignations. And typically the, uh, retirees are honored at the end of the year barbecue, um, privately. But that may come down to happen on top of Dr. Leighton's, uh, board and it's sure that that's still in place that the last day of the teacher contract, uh, to be in high school, middle school, he deserved. And that is, uh, for the retirees. And, um, so just to the first of the work and dedication, uh, that I noticed. Um, as far as renovations, we've had a lot of reservations due to, I mean, movements. We've had a few that are, um, moving to the charter schools. Um, this is very different, uh, reasons, so why our, uh, staff are leaving the plan for, um, we, um, introducing or actually having, um, new staff. Since we look at, uh, for them, of course, always do a hit them, making sure that, uh, our numbers, uh, staffing match budgets. So typically when we have declining numbers, student enrollment, we lose a couple of staff members. And because it's been on that some of the time, we have, um, absorbed a few positions in order to, um, balance the budget, um, for the, um, replacements. As soon as we receive the letters of resignation or retirement, uh, positions are posted and, um, principals are already likely, we have enough candidates to interview. We're already moving forward with offering, uh, uh, offers to, uh, potential staff for the school year. Uh, so right now it's just, uh, principals, that's what they like to do. They wanna make sure that they get their staffing placed before they start their short little summer, right, beginning of the school year. And then of course, we are just constantly, um, looking, we have, uh, we still use the rate, we have our online application process and, um, on our website and, uh, unfortunately, it, just, you know, teachers are just not there like they were in the past. But we do definitely try to get, uh, positions now. But wherever in the mindset area, certain positions, uh, Ms. Frazier is working on, um, looking at the staffing pattern to delight to our department, uh, process that we have to get those, uh, F T over gives. And just, um, making sure that, uh, we have certified staff who's too long for this. You know, a lot of districting is the way it is. And, um, don't worry about, so. That, um, yes.
Best, I appreciate all your service and, but, you know, Taus is so beautiful. And you talk about online and I know, you know, being an outdoors person living in Taus as long as I have. Dr. Leighton coming to Taus now and he, you know, he was looking at the students, but, you know, I don't know if we're, you know, maybe thinking out of the box of recruiting, you know, versus online, let's get out. You went to the municipal state, people want to get out to eat. Uh, you know, how beautiful Taus is, talk to someone, and I grew up in Kansas City and I said, how's it weather? Someone who's looking at buying a house here, he's going back to New York and he said, hot. Because we know we made it, so just something maybe, you know, with collaboration that we can look at going, you know, like, uh, like the job. So just something, maybe, you know, with collaboration that we can look at going, you know, like the job recruitment at the high school. People, kids were getting interviewed with different entities of the community, the paper, the hospital, and things like that. That we go out, you know, do a online recruiting.
Also, we find that we had, as examples, and Mr. King, we do, we attend the job fairs. We have brought teachers from Durango. We attend the UNA in New Mexico State. The reality, they, we do, they want to come here. I, when I do attend job fairs, we have, we have individuals that line up and they see Taos municipal schools. They moved here, they lasted here eighteen months and simply cannot afford to live here.
How is it?
It is real. It is real. We have lost really good staff. They come here with the hope and the dream that they're going to make it happen. And it's just the weak end of it. They just can't make it happen. Unfortunately, it's not that we don't have the interest. It's that sustainability, the retention piece. That's what we want.
What's your ballpark?
You know, I'm going to say, I just, but looking back even like last year, I believe it's been a couple of years. We brought really, really good candidates from from Durango area. You think, oh, they're in the Durango area, they're used to the higher cost of living and two years, two years max. And they move on when we hire younger, right out of college, single individuals. They just can't make it work. We move on to Al, down to Los Cruces, Roswell. Anymore, it's just entire state of Mexico, the cost of living has increased. It's not just Taos anymore. That's the number one crisis that lies. It's the, it is, it's not, it is not anything other than the retention piece that is a shame. You get the same with the San Diego Public Schools. You actually could afford a house down south and now with the price of housing, it's down across cruises. It just, it's just really difficult. Rents are just outrageous, as everybody can attest to. Unless they have a spouse or a significant family, it is the retention piece. People have talked about, have you guys looked into the teacher aspect of it? Maybe we should really talk about offering teachers to staff. And it's, it's beautiful, you know, it just all comes down to to funding. We have the interest. We really do.
See, a horrible housing. A work place.
Well, we will do our part to try to get our certified staff. Should we prefer our children are not faced with dealing with law and such, I mean, yes, with such to teachers. But it's just not the same as having a certified teacher in the classroom.
November K, if I may, Ms. Winters and our administrative team, we're going to be putting our heads together and see what creative ideas that we can come up with to increase that retention.
We appreciate it. Thank you. We were talking about that. I just wanted to hear that from you. Yeah, so thank you.
I appreciate that. And Mr. Morocon, could I ask you to speak briefly on the community-wide summer program? If you could just provide a little information, I read that our community schools report. And I think that's something that we need to be proud of. I know you worked very hard at that. For those of you that aren't aware, we had the YMCA here in Taos. They ended up moving on, and our community was faced with some shortcomings in regards to summer programming. The board reached out to Ms. Morocon to see how we can bridge that gap. And it looks like there's something that's coming forward.
Yes, there is. President, what is running forward, Superintendent Lee? And I would also like to recognize Victoria Pampi, she had our, our community schools coordinator, who's helped out with this as well. Taos Community Foundation, when they heard that YMCA was pulling out of the, the district and the, and the town, stepped up and asked how we can work together so we can collaborate to put together a summer program. Ms. Pampi, she has been working on our community schools coordinators to put together a small program for the school district, but in partnership with Taos Community Foundation and then the Wallace Foundation and some other organizations. We're going to be able to, I believe, provide five, about five weeks of programming for our students. We weren't able to provide staff that were going to feed our students for the, for the summer, for the summer food program. But we had one of our staff members reach out, and we're going to provide EBT cards to our students and our parents so that they can provide food for their, their children. But Michael was very important to provide the food services for our students as well. So the two weeks that we have with the community schools is when I expand out. And you know, we have it at Rancho's and at Arroyos also. So the principals, I'd really like to thank them for opening up their school type and making this possible for everybody. So we're, we're bringing in the entire community. Enoz is going to take the, the biggest chunk of it. And Principal Maratencio has been on board with that, with us. They just did a walk through with Taos Community Foundation and the Wallace Foundation to designate somewhere to support the summer program. I did meet with Amy from YMCA, a kid looking to come back. It was really was, you know, my next student, he participated in the program. She did bring a thank you sign from the board and for the school district, it's sitting in the boardroom. For your, for your meeting, you can take a look at that. They were really thankful in the partnership that we were trying to, to put together. But we need to get families involved with the YMCA. It is a cultural thing that we need to work on.
Thank you for speaking of that. And thank you, Mr. Sati Stevan, and Mr. Morocon, and all those that were involved in this. You know, we, we got working families, and when summer time comes, it's, you know, who's going to, what, what are my kids going to do? And we want to have some kind of a conventional program, the philosophy of it. So it's very good to hear that.
It is. And I, I thank Taos Community Foundation and CJ Grace for the partnership. And it's really nice that she has an understanding of how the district works and the thing that we can and cannot do to provide the support for the students. So, Mory Winter has been one of the easiest partnerships that we have. So we're very thankful to them.
Thank you. I have one more question of one of our administrators, and I wanted to see if Mr. Eko Morocon would consider this. I saw in the report that the furry dog war is is, is still ongoing. And I just wanted to see, just maybe get an update. I know you and Mr. Sifero's have been working very hard on that. We had a couple campuses in Taos High School being one, and Little House Middle School, and Rancho Elementary suffering from invasion of furry dogs. So I just wanted to see kind of where we're at in that. So what is, what is the recent war?
We pretty much lost the battle in the community. Well, we, you know, with everything else going on, Brett and myself. This was actually something that called for a full-time person that could be there every day. If you missed a day, or you missed two days, maybe they were just there. They held the babies and stuff. It's, we lost that one. We're, you know, at this point, we think that we need to probably just start watering and using water, making mud. They don't like that. And trying to dry them out that way. Other than that, the field itself is probably going to be, you know, just completely beat up. Our issue there is we don't have irrigation, we have sprinkler heads. We can't just take the tractor out there and, you know, just, just scatter the stuff like that. So, spreading myself, I've been kind of talking about options, you know, what we, what, what treatment use that that yield. The high schools, we're still doing pretty good there. We, we have that under control. The baseball field was a big issue there. And Rancho's, that one, obviously, we haven't been up there. It's such a large area, you know, we were trying to focus on the only thing we thought we could do. And Rancho's as well, we need, between us, we couldn't do. We would have needed a lot of people to do that. Our only, our only real success story during this whole battle was part of you. We did take that one, and, you know, we did that one back. It's actually driving.
So, thank you for the update. And thank you for all your hard work on that. Definitely, I'll try back. I would like to ask Dr. Leyton, if you could look with Mr. Morocon. You know, we, we do need to figure out a way to get a handle on those rodents that are kind of taking over, taking over the middle school football field, which was once a playable field, which is now not safe for our students. We received, we're going to be back on the pitch for that, the middle school. They want to, they want the field, but unfortunately, we can't, we grow no drop meat and hold everywhere. I'm not sure what we're going to do, but thank you for that. Thank you for the update. And I appreciate that you're going to war with furry dogs. Really helps the village. Thank you so much. Well, I think all our administrators, we appreciate your reports. You know, unfortunately, we can't, who I think in regards to all the reports, we do appreciate your reports. Look forward to reading about all the successes and how everybody's doing within the district. So with that, we'll move on. Yes, forward.
I just want to thank Dr., I'd like to thank you for your great time at the Rancho's Elementary, Dr. Momason. Thank you. It was very warm. Kids did a great job. I know President Mark and Vice President Sprey wasn't there, but it was very nice. It was a nice warm feeling. Appreciate it.
So moving forward, we have item 5, finance office. I don't believe there's any items under the finance at this time. So we'll move on to item J, home business. Day one is certainly to be viewed and possible approval of naming of the Taos High School while we move after Mr. Joel Torres. This is for Mr. Morocon and the UCL East.
President, what is members of the board's perspective lately? Can I even, that they can take over to the name for the review and possible approval of the the walking room after Mr. Jones was there? You've had a report packet from the last meeting. I have reviewed the rubrics that were presented. Everybody has one. Committee member voted for as to move forward with renewing the, the walking room after Mr. Jones was there. You do have pictures in your packet of the proposed site of where we could place a plaque for Mr. Jones was there. And it would be inside the, inside the hallway of either, you know, above the door of the welding classroom or to the side of it. We discussed that that might be the best way that people will get where it is.
I wasn't at the last meeting, so I I'll give you your time. Oh, yeah, it's the last meeting. Where that was, is it when you walk into the welding room, where are you thinking of putting the plaque?
So the plaque would actually be on the outside of the classroom. So when we were speaking, it seemed like it would be a good idea that students could actually view it as they were walking by, and they knew the, the room was being dedicated to. The, the other place was this larger area in the classroom. It's above some of the welding tools that, well, actually it's not above the welding tools, it's on the other side of the wall. But this is a large area. We would have to look at an outside source to make something to be big enough to fit in that area. This is a reasonable space. It would, if any of you have seen Mr. Locas' plaque in dedication to the reunion, it would be about outside. Not, not something large, but you know, overly large, but it would be a good place to fit that plaque. The cost to this whole district would probably run about $300 from what I was looking at, the price of the plaques for the, for that area. We did have the community members agree that, you know, this would be a good place to have it. There was some discussion on having a dedicated on the outside of the building. But, you know, we, we pulled that back just because it was, we were confused whether or not it was the whole building that was being or just the welding classroom. And it was agreed that the committee all said that they would like to see just the classroom dedicated because the rest of the building is dedicated to, you know, woodworking or our science programs as well. So.
Thank you for that. So it was the majority of the committee to move forward with the naming of that? If the board have any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to this item?
I did. And only because I think at the last meeting, we thought it might be a good idea. I think it's just a suggestion that the plaque we brought and presented to the board and just to show the, the audience and, and what the plaque look like. Because we won't be able to see it, you know, in the school room. But what it, what it, what it does look like. And that at that time, after it's purchased, and at that time, it would be something that maybe the family or it would, would want to present.
Hey. Or something. Well, I believe that the family and the community members who brought this forward would love to do the plaque. If it is approved to renew the, the welding room after Mr. Jones was there, they would love to come in and show the plaque and have that dedicated and have a, a little more formal of a ceremony for that.
So before we move into action, you know, more, more advanced stuff. The school district does have a policy in regards to naming of facilities that does allow for such action to take place. It's with policy F dash four, one, four, zero, zero, FF, a naming of facilities. The Board of Education shall return in the name and renaming of schools and any other facility governed by the Taos Municipal School District. All schools will be named for community or historic locations. All schools will be based on geographic influence or named for persons of national or local historic and or educational significance. When a school or facility is to be newly named or renamed, the Board of Educational will appoint a committee, which has been done, representing that school or representing the district. The committee shall make recommendations to the board for the board's consideration. There's, there's some two meetings. The first meeting, which is already taken, has already taken place, of the components shall be presented for review and discussion. And the second meeting, which is tonight, the components shall be presented for discussion and action. I was not a student of Mr. Go Torres, but I did attend Taos High School while Mr. Torres was there. And he was a very impactful educator. I've heard, I've known the community to speak very highly of him. May he rest in peace. He will always with us. But when he taught students, and I know a few students that are eternity doubters, thanks to Mr. Go Torres and have careers and families that have, have been, they have benefited from being students of Mr. Go Torres. I, as an individual board member, see no issue with this. Mr. Go Torres served a long, lengthy career at Taos Municipal Schools. He devoted his time and his education to educating students in a career field. I don't think he only taught welding and gas, and did you discover any problems?
Primarily welding, and that was actually what a lot of this portal was based off of, was the program that he built. Our current welding instructor, Mr. Sandoval, said that we do have one of the state-of-the-art welding centers in the state of New Mexico, and that was due to Mr. Torres and the work that he did. But he also did teach industrial arts, which I was actually going to put it to. Oh, for each of us very active and as well. Oh, for each room is very active and, uh, as well.
Yes, he was a member of the sheriff's.
Yes.
Any, any concerns or comments? Um, I will, I would be honored. Uh, to make a motion, um, at this time, uh, for action to. Name the Taus High School welding after Mr. Joe Coris.
I'll second.
We have a second from one member, King, you're about to first, can you please talk for the vote?
Member Concha?
Yes.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spree?
Yes.
President Coris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will inform our community that it was, it was approved. Don't you very happy to hear that. Thanks.
Okay, item D, of all business, J two is a review and approval of amendments. Amendment one, to and from school bus operators contracts. We have Mr. Marco Sereda, uh, and this is Matt Martinez as a presenter, Mr. Sereda. Unfortunately, more than some, I have been trying, but I have not been. If you could just give a, a brief summary as to why we need these articles again.
So these were for the extra. Miles that these contractors were working this year due to lack of bus drivers. So as you can see, um. Bus three's route was sixteen route were picked up by Boston's. Uh, Boston's transportation and also by Tina, uh, K and R and Billy Ben Jacob, so. Um, basically what happened is you guys had this on agenda before we got stable. Myself and Samantha, Chanata, all of me, were really hard to, like, to uncover. What, what, what we were looking at by this one amendment in the first place. And so the recalculations, um, she was able to. Fix the amendments that were the last. So these current ones are being up to par and going forward, uh, uh, these people should be able to.
Well, would your contractors, the providers, the, for our students, can give us a school? Well, uh, just to share a brief, I, uh. I got a cousin that grew up in several in Mexico and grew up on a farm out there. And he said that every morning, you know, his dad had farming for him and he went to the school bus. He wouldn't, wouldn't make it to school because his dad won't take him to, to school because he had a little farm. It's like, he thinks the school, like the school buses. Were getting rid of the farmer and giving him an education. Those school buses are very important. They get our students to and from school and, uh, I want to thank our, our contractors and our bus drivers. Thank you for working on this. Um, any questions or comments for the board? Oh. So we got, uh, it's the A, B, C, D, and E. Uh, item J two, uh, I will go ahead and make the motion to approve. The amendments to the school bus operators contracts to include items J two, A, B, C, D, and E.
Second.
We have a second from Vice President Sylvia. Now, can you please talk for the vote?
Member Concha? Member Concha?
She was a Russian.
Member King?
Yes.
Uh, Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spree?
Yes.
President Coris?
Yes. Item K of new business. K one is review and possible approval of the N A S P O stronger connections grant. In the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars of Mr. Marco Sereda.
Again, uh, going there, looking for your approval for this one. We already received this. How much of it I want to share, or I'll share. Maybe this is one of our security issues, right? You know, you all know that I like to share everything that we do. However, I will. I'll share. So this is a huge, huge game for us for the district. We are one of the five schools in northern Mexico. It's going to be using this, uh, so stronger new connections now has, was a key near proof thing. Uh, we were one of the schools lucky enough to be selected. Uh, the technology is. Far, far more superior than anything we have so far in our security system. You've all seen our, our panic button. We've done presentations on the panic button. I want you to imagine that panic button pressed in this room right now and that camera red dot. Instantly alerting our nine dispatch center. Giving them both the visual view of that cam, the MOUs that are already approved through P D. Also giving them the, uh, opportunity to look at the layout of our building between the values, law enforcement, EMS. Uh. We, uh, even if we had the opportunity to have a missing child and we needed to look at our cameras on the outside and we needed. Exterior help from law enforcement, under service, such as, it could all go for central dispatch, which means it's not just a one agency, it's more. So it's a, it's a multi-response system is what it is. Um. It, it doesn't exist outside of the emergency district. So the emergency has ended. Dispatch no longer has the access. It's automatically killed. So that's the, that's like the winning monetary for all of us. Perpom, um, it's built into the MOUs with our dispatch center. So again, um, there's a whole, there's, there's, you all have the opportunity to read it and you can see that there's a lot more to it. Um. Again, it's paid for, ready. We have, we have the money to do it, which is me your approval to sign a contract. So I've taken about six to eight weeks for them to come and set us up. Uh, Mr. Diego, uh, Trujillo has been in contact with each other for the last two months, setting this up for you. So as soon as we get to go ahead, um, we will, we will engage in changing our core development of the new experience system. Not just security, it's a safe response system, it's more simply security, but safer structure. Are there any questions that I can add?
Hi, Mr. Howard. Um, is, I see in here some places it says the district is supplying different things. Is there going to be a, is there a nominal cost in the district? Or are you thinking of, uh, actually costing the district?
The actual, so mutually, mutually is accompanied by the P D, um. Contracted with, so they actually, the service is all provided, the technology is all provided. We have a software cost, um, after that, uh, within, uh. So cost of the district is now, it's not.
Basically have to just give them floor plans and things like that that we already have. Okay.
Actually, you know, this, um, last, we actually created.
Okay.
The floor plan system.
Thank you.
And it works with all our hands. So, so it, it's actually ready to be used.
Thank you for that answer. Appreciate it. Thank you, President. Question. Is there going to be a maintenance? Um, a push to services or? Or is it like a monthly fee that they're going to provide?
It's, it's not a monthly fee. So the custom district is again, I think that's similar to the panic button. That part of it is free. Um, you know, pay for that. Uh, there's services. It's more of a software updates, which, which the mutually company actually. So we don't actually do software. The, the, the first thing we check is to make sure that it's not going to do it through our system. Uh.
So there's going to be a cost, but it's going to be a software.
It's a software.
The software costs.
It's a software.
Okay.
And right now it's basically.
And the grant is, it's part of the grant. Okay. But it's not ongoing after, is that on the cost ongoing after the grant?
It's a renewable grant, I guess that's possible. Two hundred thousand dollars, so.
Maybe that's what I was.
Still one of the cheapest security, I mean, items that, that we've purchased.
And, um, but it's aware of it.
Absolutely.
They're aware of, okay, of the cost.
Yeah.
Okay, because sometimes these costs are hidden within the contract. And later on you find out that it's, there's going to be a maintenance fee. That a month and you identified the software maintenance fee and then that is again, it's so. Just, uh. A point of interest.
So is this? Is this like, uh, our initial upfront costs? Mr. Redder, and then we'll go on and just. Yeah, so we. What is it like? Five, what is the, uh, the soft cost like every year, you know?
So the soft cost.
That's, that's what you hear?
Yeah, that's the brand, that's the.
Okay.
The system itself, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I see.
After that, the maintenance costs is within the five thousand. So it's, it's definitely affordable and it's also renewed. So we can't get the grant again.
Oh.
And how often is it be normal?
Here.
Um, as long as the P D likes it, like you said, there's not too many, uh, schools. Our selves, C Maran, living Las Vegas, Sapporo, there was five schools in, in, in. The upper half of New Mexico, considering support of their allies, um, they were receiving this grant. So as long as it's effective and we're using the data to, to, to show its effectiveness. Uh, I'm sure P D is going to be encouraging on the beginning. They actually sent the grant out twice. Trying to get more districts to, to, to go into this. That maybe there are people somewhere like the grant, you very, very encouraged to lay our debts.
Thank you, President Coris. Are you going to have to do an annual report then to P D? On this?
It does have, we put those into it.
And are you the person who will respond to that? Okay, thank you. Even. Excellent.
Yeah, I appreciate this, Mr. Redder, because I've heard from law enforcement that they were. Not happy that we weren't able to have them look, and this is a lot better when there's emergency than they can. That's when everyone can tie in.
We did have law enforcement with us when we went through the grant, when we went through the program with the mutually representative. Uh, we did have law enforcement officials with us as kind of a guidance to what, what it looked like.
Great. I see. Sounds good.
So in regards to, you know, there was, uh. An article in the Taus News that came out, the, the Taus Municipal Schools wasn't working with local law enforcement. And regards to giving them access to our schools without. There was some behind the scenes stuff in regards to. That access was not controlled, right? To some extent. Um, so there was concern from the district about allowing anybody at any time to access our cameras. Outside of an emergency. So this is, uh, emergency, uh, is, is start, the access to the cameras. All granted, when that panic button is pressed. Um, so it, it covers, you know, uh, the privacy of our students and teachers. Nobody could be just watching a classroom. Or joining or just to see what's going on. Um, so, uh, Taus Municipal Schools is moving forward and I do want to thank. Uh, Mr. Herrera, uh, as our security director, uh, he's implemented a lot of initiatives that have brought Taus Municipal Schools. To be a lot safer in our campuses, protecting staff and students as well as parents. Um, you know, this security staff is, is, uh, top notch. I've seen them in action. If you can, with the basketball, football games, they're, they're there. We walk the halls, we have, we have meeting at Taus High School where we had Mr., uh. Martinez's here presentation about the program, the national program, the participating room. So, um. Just want to thank you to bring this forward, uh, Mr. Herrera, for this. And, and, you know, you can't put a price on a life. You can't put a price on a lost child. Uh, time is of the essence, finding a lost child with responding to an emergency. So I, I see no issue with approving this. I will, with the board would, would, uh, would seek it. It's a true goal. Um. So with that, um, with. With the, with the boards, uh. And, and, and the board were entertaining a motion for a giving?
Hold on, hold on, entertain a motion for a second.
We have a moment to contact here, Trujillo, and a second from Vice President Sylvia for approval. That first is for the vote.
Member Concha?
Yes.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Spree?
Yes.
President Coris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wallace. Appreciate you.
Thank you, board. Appreciate your caution, I appreciate it.
You are. Item K, uh, K two of new business is review and possible approval of value fence company. The fence, Royal Delors Elementary, Raptors Elementary School, and the Taus. Middle School. Your, your.
Thank you.
Your T M S P, Taus. T M S P parking lot?
Yes. Uh, it's the parking lot behind our administration building?
Yeah, the district.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, President Coris, uh, Vice President Spree, members of the board. Uh, Superintendent Ladin, uh, I'm here, uh, introduce myself for Mr. Ladin. I'm Fred Cetos. I am school's project manager and maintenance manager, helping a deep view, uh, with. Uh, most of the maintenance and projects in the school district. Uh, today I'm coming to you for approval for, uh. Project that had been started, uh, Mr. Herrera, I have not been set, you know, two or three meetings as well with the security and safety of our schools. Uh, we reviewed some of the areas that needed to be addressed, uh. Uh, if you look at your first page here, uh, looking at Royals, the market, which we, we are at right now. Uh, nine in red is the fence that we're going to be working on. Uh, this one here is all we're doing is repairing. We're not replacing it or doing anything. The fence here is in actually pretty good, good condition, but we have a lot of spots around that. We get wild animals and game that, that have. Broken and cut down the fence to get into the field and to get access to the green grass and stuff like that. So, uh. Some of you guys know that we have a walking path that walks the kids all the way around to the hour bench line and all the way back. And it's, it's in the tree night and so, so what we want to do is, you know, secure that fence and, and make it a little safer. For, you know, something not, you know, harming for kids.
Is there a Cooper that is part of the game camera?
Yeah, I know I came the other day. There was a bunch of deer on the field early in the morning and, I mean, we got some pretty big holes and. That something has been trying to get in or out of. So, you know, like I said, the fence isn't getting all replaced. It's just getting repaired with, with new fence. Lot of the fence was, wasn't done correctly when it first got done. So it's going to get re-stretched and, you know, re-tied down a bit stronger. Uh, if you turn it on to your second image there, uh, we're looking at, uh, Enos Garcia. Uh, this is, uh, one of the areas that we're, uh, with Mr. Herrera, uh, security. Uh, we're trying to, what we're trying to do here is close down the campus completely. So there is no access to our campuses by anybody other than. Somebody that's approved to be on campus or they have, uh, get approval to, you know, from one of the buildings. So on this one, if you look at the top end, uh, there's a little section of the fence there coming into the. Early childhood that was never put up to begin with. I don't know why there, there's that gap in, in, in the fences and that's getting put up. We're also putting security gates and fencing, uh, so there's no, no more access to the campus at all. It's all going to be shut down. The only way you can get into that campus is if you ring the doorbell at any of the front offices. Uh, if you look in the backside there, there's another fence that's back there. That fence is going to be done at a later time, uh. That wasn't, uh, able to be put into, to the budget that's, uh, allowed right now. So that does need to be addressed, but we're going to work on that. At, at a later portion of the, of the fence projects. We have quite a bit of actual projects and the fence even need to be done in our school. But budget restraints, we're going to, you know, work on the most important ones. Turn to the next page. This, this area here is the Taus Municipal Parking Lot on the backside. And so what's happening here is at night, late in the evenings, uh, we're getting a lot of. Uh, homeless people would get a lot of teenagers, a lot of people go back there, park there. It's away from anybody that nobody can see them back there. You know, there leaving trash and beer bottles, garbage, doing donuts in the parking lot. And the other security purpose of it is going to be because we also have a cyber bank. One of our aims from, uh, Palms is we need to have a secure campus for that. So that will, you know, one, it's securing the campus for the kids. Two, it's securing it and keeping it safe for after hours. So as you can see, the red line is the fence. The greens are going to be the gates that are going to be in place. And then the final one is going to be Rancho's. Uh, I know you guys have talked about Rancho's, uh, couple of me back, you and Mr. Herrera. Uh, Principal, I think, was one of the other ones that came in. On this one here, we have a lot to do on it. But unfortunately, uh, with the budget that we have with this portion of it, the only thing that's getting done is a smaller portion at the bottom. Where it enters into Rancho's elementary. What we're doing there is we're securing the back campus portion of the campus. Right now, anybody can drive into the back portion of the campus and access the whole campus from there, you know, which you can have anybody, anybody. Get in there without, nobody knowing. So what we're doing there is we're fencing the corner of the building. Uh, there's going to be one pedestrian gate where the existing sidewalk is. And then we're going to have, uh, two automatic gates, uh, through solar power that have been operating that. So. Early morning, the janitors can go in, open their gates, so school, uh, school buses and teachers can drive in. Once nine o'clock phones or whenever school starts, those gates will be closed. The other one they can access of. once nine o'clock phones or whenever school starts, those gates will be closed, the other one they can access of is staff either by a wall control or a keypad, I don't know if you get the answer to that, so that whole campus will be quite a big set here. There's still a little bit of area in the front that we need to look at, but you know, that one's got cameras, and we got mobility there where it's, you know, somebody can get visibly noticed earlier rather than one in the back, it's hard, this is to tell if anyone is there, so these are the projects that we're coming to the table with today, with all the stuff that we've uh sold you right now, we're still about that is uh a hundred and forty one thousand three hundred ninety two dollars and sixteen cents. And we're asking the board today, uh, so me, my personal, you know, the company we chose is uh through General Services, they are uh already procured. We went to C D, we looked at C A S, we looked at General Services, we've looked at our region. I also still went out further beyond that and got three quotes, different quotes from other fencing companies. And this uh valley fence was the cheapest of all three. I I even locally, I contacted a few local contractors and I never got a response or anything, got answers from anybody locally, unfortunately. Uh, we like to but I didn't get no response to when we had those five. So, so right now, I guess, we're asking for permission to go ahead and move forward with this and put it into a P O. Move vice president.
Okay, I just want to tell the board, thanks, thanks to Ms. Moldergon and Alipio, I've toured, except for the school, I've toured all these. And I can tell you that fences definitely need fixing, that are highlighted here, I know exactly what they look like. So I want you to all feel very confident. I also, I absolutely, thank you for the tours, I love them and I can't wait for the final one, but um the other thing is that you guys should get yourselves ready, prepare yourselves, because we own all this land and a lot of that is fenced either safely, so so I hope that someday Fred will be back with another fencing contract, so get ready. But this, I can tell you this, thank you for doing this, it's really, there's places that are that are dangerous for plants.
You weren't the one trying to get in or out?
No, I I went to school, I went to school, I got out. Anyway, thank you so much, I I'm so happy, Alipio and Fred, we see this happening.
We've got notice from the Taus High School that they have some extra money on their behalf, they want to rebuild the old road entrance and their gate and all that. We're trying to get somebody to come in and kind of keep what's there, keep the wrought iron and the house, you know, house name up there and all that stuff that was on the, that's on the old gates, we're trying to find a contractor that can come in, I don't know what kind of money the high school has for that, to to be able to rebuild that, but I'm working on that also.
And thank you for being so careful and prepared.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Very much.
And then, uh, so yeah, I guess just getting approval for that and to move forward and moving into a P O and then getting our contractor on. Yeah.
You know, I I must uh prior to going for uh a motion for approval, it's been historical, uh, as the board, we we asked a recommendation from our superintendent, and I want to apologize to you for that, I don't think you're trying to do coming at four, been here three days and what I do want to give you the ability, and it is deservedly so, in that respect for to ask you for your recommendation, and I do apologize to you, some of these other items, it is uh we've, you know, we look to the superintendent for a recommendation. So I would like to ask you as superintendent, what is your recommendation would be on this contract?
Well, my recommendation, uh, for President, thank you for that. Next to approve the uh valley fence company to bring the campus of the district, uh, and the person.
We do have a recommendation from uh Superintendent Ling for approval of this uh contract, we heard from Mr. Cisneros, I believe you have heard, past meetings of the need to increase security with the board entertaining motion for approval.
Just one question from Mr. Cisneros.
Sure.
You said that before the fence wasn't it wasn't put up right, was it here, this campus that?
I mean, it's put up, you know, it's put up okay, it just wasn't done to the standards that needed to be, I mean, there's no cross braces on the corners. So when you stretch the fence and there's some cross braces and insulation on, so when when we walked with the several contractors, they all you know, pointed out the same same thing.
It was obvious. So this company had nothing to do with the?
No.
Okay, that's all.
Okay.
In in the board packet, it does show that Valley Fence is a state contractor, so they've been made and due by the state of Mexico. And they do hold a state contract with General Services Division. So we do have a recommendation for approval, board members want to make a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second Board Member King's motion for approval. And first, he's vulnerable.
Member Concha?
Yes.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
Senator Flores?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just just to give a little bit of insight and inviting Mr. Alipio, I have a very doubt, so perhaps during when we started looking at this and talking about this, I have reached out to a couple of contractors that do this professionally, uh, I just uh we never really got a point anymore further than that, but the people that, I mean, I'd have to re-contact them again, see if they're still available, but they do the same thing we were doing, but in a big, much bigger, broader uh, so we're using these little, you know, carbon dioxide little things that tow the hole and cover the hole. But it's about this big and it doesn't throw out that much gas. But these guys usually have a trailer they pull behind, they do a TV, and they show them a post or novel in the ground, a very small, and it fills a lot of cavity and it does a lot more damage than than what we're using now. Uh, so that's something that we could entertain. Right now, I think we're already too much gas in the situation, because they've already had their babies and had all that stuff, so the best time to do this kind of stuff is like early April, March in that area before they start having babies, so that's something we can re-resurface and I can bring it to him again, to him and Superintendent, this is one we can look at and see. So you want to shoot more, uh, rather than whatever else you may be, I don't know.
Mr. Superintendent, I think that's a great idea, why don't you uh I meet with Superintendent Dean, seek his direction on that, and some way we could entertain uh moving forward as to when would be the best time, and what would be the best? Now, we really got to get a handle on this, because they're just going to continue to uh multiply and
Yeah, he he turned it on, female will have eight or ten babies, so you imagine how many there are now. Triple, quadruple, but you know, it's getting, it's getting out of hand, we don't get a handle of it soon, we're, you know, and nothing's guaranteed. But we tried what we did, if we had a handle on some of the smaller areas that that one is bad, or some of the bigger areas like middle school, and if we don't get it this year, the next year is really worse, and we're in this, I don't
This is, I think this summer is better, because the kids aren't there.
It is, but I you know, talking with the the exterminator people that do it, you know, they they have a time and even the guy that helped us when we started doing this, this early year, that's why we started versions. His suggestion was that they started apartments a year before they start reading and all that, but you know, we'll go by, I think, the people that know how to do it already have their experience and their recommendations.
But I asked the said at the high school, the shooting be more than happy.
I mean, it's something we use, it's not poison, or that they use is not poison, it's carbon dioxide, so it stays in the ground and it doesn't cause any damage to anybody, and yes, the best time would probably be during school. But if we do it in, you know, maybe a spring rain or something like that, it would probably work, you know, when when there are no kids for a couple of weeks. Get closer to the school area, but on fields and stuff like that, I think we should be fine, but there everything that I get to contact with them, still if they're available.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, item K D three is a review and possible approval of our local consulting services. Can I ask this one of the one to help present on this, if you may, or Dr. Layden?
I can, we have to present the the contract in the
Okay. Oh.
So, the tell, for President, so this particular contract is presented for our Seattle Consulting Services. And what they do is they represent the district, and they represent their area. Um, especially if we know the kind of funding that's looking for, and the there's instructions, some of the different aspects of it. Um, we rely on representation from our district to see how we can better increase our uh funding and the different services, especially that serve R F P's. Um, I would like to see if it's a possible that yet we need, and potentially approved for the consulting services, and this is from last year. It's a, you know, for twenty five thousand, everybody should have a copy of it. And so we do this on a yearly basis, so just really we can read the consulting services so they can represent us.
Yes, Secretary.
Um, I think if we, did this go out for R F P? Or can, or is that because it's under, under the sixty thousand threshold, that we're just we're uh or are we soliciting other spots?
Secretary, I have an answer for you, I'm not sure if you recall or not, during um Valerie, Trujillo's tenure as superintendent, we went out to R F P um for a multi-year contract that that is to be brought forward to the board on an annual basis for approval. Um, there was three quotes that were brought forward for uh consulting lobbying firm. Um, and the board did approve uh the ability to grant, uh, well, we approved a multi-year contract for annual renewal.
Okay, so this is the, which year are we in?
This is the second.
This is the second year, okay. Just making sure, yeah, just making sure that the that the procurement was and then
Because it
and we did too.
Okay, and I see where you're going, if we continue to approve these regularly, then it will see to the the state procurement track, and then we'll be about
Remember, uh, you have this second year.
This is the second year, okay.
Okay, President Flores, uh, if I may, do you want to exceed the amount for the for the procurement that every news every school year, so within that year, this uh contract is actually five thousand dollars, so we'll make it our permit for that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, uh, this, this for the record, the amount um is twenty five thousand dollars for an annual fee that I believe is paid out in monthly installments. And it's for a representing, to represent Taus Municipal Schools and advocate extension, both at the Mexico State Legislature in regular and special sessions, as well as attending all relevant interim committees as assigned by the K by K M S. Or when issues affecting K M S are discussed.
Good job.
Um. I think we're all aware of Mr. Archuleta's work, uh, we've been able to uh secure legislative funding and funding from the governor um in partnership with him and other uh community advocates. Uh, I myself visited the legislature for uh two days like this past legislature session, and Mr. Archuleta had me running up the downstairs of the roundhouse, and I actually got sore. Uh, I did, but I wasn't used to that, um, but you know, chasing our uh senators and representatives trying to get funding for the district, uh, we've worked very hard uh for the district, and I I think if we here, we pulled the the amounts of money that we have received through his work, um the key and the returning investment is there, um, superintendent, is the board having questions?
Yeah.
Superintendent Dean, do you have any, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. I do recommend, uh, excuse me, recommend, I do recommend that we improve the consulting services for uh, services that to anybody else.
I, we we have a board entertaining a motion.
I would like to be able to make one, please.
Thank you.
Um, I would like to make a motion to approve the contract for Archuleta Consulting Services for another year in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars to be paid a monthly install. Well, sir.
With uh matter of course, we have a motion for approval from Vice President Cynthia and a second from Secretary Trujillo, uh, if he's available.
Member Concha?
Yes.
Member King?
Yes.
Secretary Trujillo? Secretary Trujillo? Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry, it sounds strange, yes, President Flores?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have got uh a few more items on the agenda. Uh, item L is the consent agenda, we have nine items on the yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we have nine items on the consent agenda, um. Would the board like to uh discuss any of the items under the consent agenda?
President Flores, I would like to discuss item L two, please.
Okay, uh, Vice President Cynthia has asked to just, has asked to discuss item L two, which is review and possible approval of H V A C speeding and cooling. X energy mechanical for A V N E, which is the Road of Orange Elementary, about eight hundred and sixty six thousand two hundred and thirty one dollars. Ratters Elementary School, two hundred and fifty three thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars. And Taus High School Library, about three thousand four hundred and thirty five dollars of Miss Eager.
President Flores, I have for you a proposal to upgrade the H V A C systems in our schools. Um, all of other elementary classrooms will have their commission after this and an improved H V A C system, no repeating. Um, also the also the, and the Rancher Elementary School, the the rooms that have exterior windows and the other part will have improved H V A C system, and the high school would have a place, they have a swamp cooler currently, and they would have an upgraded system there.
Excellent. Okay, well, that's my question, thank you, President Flores. I was, I was hoping that we could do kind of a deep dive on this um on these contracts with this company in terms of procurement, because I don't see a lot of that information in here. And I'm sorry, Ms. Mya is isn't here, she's the C P O, and she's not here, and Tanya left too, so Ms. Eager, if it's something that you aren't ready to talk about, I'm sure Ms. Moldergon can help me with it. But I'd like to do a little bit of that deep dive to see how prepared we've worked on these new contracts.
So we're using our funding for this, and our funding success September thirtieth this year, so we um, we do have these quotes here. Um, they are an A C S vendor.
A C S is um oh, it's is that is, A C S is a procurement partner?
That's correct.
They are correct, so it's similar to C E S?
Similar to the, yes.
Or a state contract?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's one of the, one of the um programs that we go through if we're exceeding our our rounds instead of going out to the R F P or using A C S or C E S or G F P.
And why do you, you do not go out to R F P on things this large, just because it's easier to go to the, go to the one like C E S or easier and more cost efficient?
It's it's proven to be more cost efficient for us, and we're looking at uh companies that are able to do uh what we need done when it comes to our H V A C systems. And uh X Energy is one of the the companies that is able to provide those services, when we looked at other companies they've been uh more expensive for the school districts.
Okay.
So I, I'm slightly familiar with my next, but I am familiar with Aces, and they are similar to C E S, the contractors are very good, uh through Aces, and they uh have to adhere to uh certain piece structures.
The 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 money for this is, is this some of our initiative, money that you pay for this, or?
This is, this is the all part, we do have additional funds for
Yes.
Um, and then for this purpose, of course, we're gonna need, we do have additional funds, which as you're aware of, we receive that um this year, our capital outlay for H V A C systems, this is going to take care of a portion of our schools. And that'll get in the cooling systems, but then we have uh additional areas that we need to work on and with our H V A C systems, as you know, and they're continually breaking down on us and and need repair, so capital outlay will kick in for for those additional repairs that are needed, but this capital outlay will kick in for, for those additional repairs that are needed, but this is specifically for the safety of the classrooms. And making sure that we have cool classrooms in those summer months and the warmer months for the school district.
Uh, two, two, one comment, one question, I guess, question first. Um, so it's, we're utilizing our funding and I'm sure that there's strict guidelines on how we utilize those funds, um. Utilizing ACES is, is, uh, to, to the RFP?
They, they have that.
Oh.
So they do need to go through a process, uh, Ms. Eager has to apply for it with, um, the state of New Mexico with PED. Uh, they redo all, review all of our documentation and ensure that we're following the guidelines, the federal guidelines that have been uh, set forth for us and these have all been approved, so we're asking that we can move forward with the purchase of these.
Yeah, we'll sign off by PED, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Sure.
Uh, and then my comment was, uh, I'm familiar with Ratchet Elementary and North Dr. Shino, I'm all still here, um. There's that older building, uh, the older part of the building that, uh, doesn't have any cooling. And, uh, they have opening windows and the windows are right in front of parking lots and somebody could see a little window when try to jump through or something like the floor. I do see Mr. Johnny Martinez, are you familiar with, you reviewed?
Uh, yes, which?
The HVAC installation for the school district?
Yeah, be quiet, my, please, here, you can start.
Oh, Mr. and Eric, Eric, be a little nice.
I can wait.
Thank you guys for joining us.
Sure.
So I, I guess my question would be so, uh, do you gentlemen not visiting school sites and you know the needs of, of, of this? Will you just kind of speak to the work that's gonna be done?
Or, um, we can start with, uh, Ratchets, if that's okay, uh, if you were to see, um, uh, top of the building, a lot of the rooms specifically are south-facing rooms that are suffering from, uh, you know, uh, sun, sun, heat from the sun, it's absorbing and it's making the rooms very uncomfortable, uh. These rooms have two sources of comfort equipment, if you will, uh, they have radiant heating, which tends to be a little strange, especially this time of year, but it does not provide the required air and fresh air for students and staff. Um, there's currently some ERBs on the roof which are working against it in the winter time, uh, they're, they're designed to recover and add fresh air. What they're doing is in the summertime, they're bringing in the hot humid air and mixing it and vice versa. In winter, they're bringing in cool air. The heat provisions on them are insufficient, uh, therefore pulling down rooms, working against the boiler system, uh, again, for radiant, therefore making things inefficient. So all the, I believe there's ten zones or ten rooms that have been chosen on that property, uh, to prioritize, um. You have any questions? Um, the type of equipment that was, uh, specified is, uh, they're, they're recompensable package and they're not, they do not run on natural gas. They are heat pumps, so they run their refrigerated units that transfer back and forth between the, also providing fresh air, required friction. Is what we're expecting and ERBs, which are up there now, the energy recovery units will be, uh, removed and these will be set based those.
And in regards to the North End?
The North End, we have five cluster buildings, uh, up on top here and basically all of them are suffering from, from, uh, heating, uh, solar game. Um, so we have, each cluster has two furnace systems, uh, force air furnace. So what we're gonna do is the old furnaces are too, they're too old to integrate newer air conditioning. Expecting the new furnace, uh, which is equivalent to what's there now and will accept a new, uh, cooling system, which are also, um, are, are those very, yeah, these will be cooling and also providing some fresh air. Ten, ten zones.
Hi.
Is it?
Um.
Uh, forgive me, it's fourteen zones in Ratchets and ten here at Rost.
Secretary.
Are they going to be cost efficient? Because when you think of, or energy efficient, because when you think of, well, things that have been there forever and just are really, it's not just the heat issue, but also the cost. And then energy efficient, is, are, are these systems energy efficient?
They're, they're high efficiency units, um, medium to high efficiency, well. So the heat pump portion of it, of course, takes away from the natural gas, so it will be all under one, uh, component, if you will, um. They will absolutely be, uh, efficiency wise, because they're now going to be able to work hand in hand with the, it's more radiant heating. So what we call a two-stage heating and cooling system, it's two stages of heating, um, and we can take low rock, lower, greater system and utilize these new force air units as a primary heat source. And should they fail or not keep up, the boiler system will take over. Correct. Yes, there are quite a few benefits. Uh, the spent media, uh, for what else would be able to get the required pressure in these platforms?
Thank you, President Follas. Hi, welcome. Do you, um, have you used this particular brand or system before?
Absolutely.
Have you? And what kind of service record? I mean, do you, happening, what's the deal with service on those?
Oh, they're, they're, as long as you keep up on maintenance. And, you know, one big issue on here is power, you know, that.
Yeah.
Um, we're, we're at the mercy of our power, that, that's been our biggest demise.
Right.
But, you know, other than that, as long as we're taking care of them and people are reporting any problems, I mean, John Law.
Um, and your service is in addition to this?
Excuse me?
Your service, the cost of service is in addition to this?
Um.
Yes. Another, yes. By the, by the.
They have a one-year warranty.
They do.
Uh, they were as well as he, but, but, you know, we, we do provide, uh, maintenance services for the schools. We are very familiar with all the facilities.
So for the board, they do, in our packets, they do outline the locations and the, the areas and, uh, you know, being on the board of, as I've been, I received, uh, a lot of concern from our teachers and I know match to sound, because these areas here are south-facing, yeah, big windows, um, that's, I don't think the fourth grade and classroom number thirteen, right there. Um, and, uh, I think it's very important to provide, uh, comfort and, uh, and also, you know, keeping windows closed, uh, with these, you know, the security aspects of it. So there is a one-year warranty and all, all, all their actually, it was a one-year, maybe a ten-year, uh, I mean, within this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it should be longer than a year.
It's ten-year for rating depending on what part of the unit, the, the exchanger, uh, you know, certain parts have longer than others, but, you know, they start from three up to ten with the major components for ten years.
That's good to know, uh. Okay, okay, I was there a lawyer? Did I hear a lawyer? The library, oh, yeah.
Um, so the library has a very old packaging up there, which is evaporated, uh, evaporated cooling for the swamp coolers, anybody who's owned it. And in this unit in particular, in the last twelve years, has been so long, it's cost so much money, um. It has a lot of electrical issues and we tried to build and it's time to books a week.
It's very valuable. It's very important, it's a library that, uh, you reduce the amount of humidity and that will become so good to book, so I think it's good to, that.
Uh, dehumidification, uh, what we're, what we're disposing is a, it is a, uh, refrigerated even, which is a, a, a means of dehumidification. Which will be, uh, great for, for the books and everything in that library. Once again, that library at the high school, uh, the main source of heat is radiant heating. This is also gonna provide that pressure for that, conditioned pressure, which will be very important for not only the occupant, but the valuable, you know, the books and stuff there in that particular building.
Right, well, thank you, gentlemen, and Ms. Eager for answering all these questions, you know, uh, questions need to be asked for, for the dollar amount, trying to do our diligence, make sure we're covering all bases and not rubber stamping everything and, uh, or, uh, definitely trust me, Ms. Eager, when, you know, we received everything that needed to take place on this, um. You know, I, well, you know, the Ratchet Elementary, you know, needs, the, the services, it's been a long time coming. Um, summers are getting hotter, you know, we do have cold winters here. Um, I know the North End has some issues and they need the same, uh, type of service, um, and, and equipment. Um, I, I have no problem in hearing Mrs. Eager, Mr. Martinez and Mr. Quayle, who's the owner of the company, being present, uh, they spoke on the warranty. Uh, they spoke, uh, through the installations, um, I, I feel comfortable, uh, making a motion to approve. Um, or actually leaving it in the consent agenda and we, there's no more, uh, questions, we can.
Thank you, I appreciate you making me brilliant.
And just one comment, President Follas? Yes, just for future reference, it's great to do business smoothly. I know guys who work for you, I see your trucks. But, you know, as a, as the, as board members, people always want to know costs. And with warranties and also put that up front, guarantees, that helps us. Hey, we got a ten-year guarantee, we got one-year service, you know.
Sure.
Most of us all owns and it's great when someone tells you that, because it's like, oh, okay, I can give you a call.
Sure.
Is that, that just assures everyone that guys would be around.
Sure, we could also, uh, submit some equipment, some little spring, so you know what you're looking at, the type of equipment. Um, it's, it's kind of like looking at the magnum, uh, that, that's absolutely.
Well, it's fine, I just, the, when you have, you know, parts, ten years guarantee, when you're servicing, it just helps everyone when we're looking this over, because it's a lot of paperwork, you know, different meetings you're going through it, uh, and it'd just be good to see it right in front. We should appreciate it. Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
I think we're, we're good, um, I think, uh, we do have, I want to thank the culinary program for being here for this full time. We appreciate you guys, um, Vice President Cynthia.
Yes, I wanted to say, I want to make sort of a joke motion that next time you're here to ask for permission to travel, we pull them out and.
Just speaking of that, I missed.
I'm so sorry, I've been sitting here thinking you guys are such troopers, you're just awesome, but it's late and sorry.
Oh, you just got a, a physics class, okay.
We blew it, it was us, but I just, I, I made a note to myself, so next time I see you all beautiful faces here, to move you up higher in the agenda.
Mister, Mister Medina, you don't mind, um, just speaking briefly, you guys are gonna, sharing with us all that, that you're gonna be going to, to Atlanta, Georgia? Sounds exciting?
Uh, yeah, so this is gonna be our second nationals trip this year, essentially, I will flip, we went to Baltimore, Maryland, uh, that the, in the Bay Area, most beautifully. Uh, so this is the Skills USA, uh, National Leadership Skills Conference, uh, in Atlanta, Georgia, and this will be the second year of our, to me. Bro. Uh, actually, Adam Martinez went last year, now this Shane Brown here, but it's not a new, it's first year. Um, at the Skills Racing, your manager. Uh, and it's, it's a super beneficial program for the, uh, not only for culinary arts, but, uh, I, I talked to, uh, Principal Judo, uh, about growing the Skills USA program at the high school, because there, there's a ton of, uh, programs that are available for kids to compete in, for welding, woodworks, uh, nursing. Uh, a lot, hundreds of them, so. Yeah, and we're, you know, asking permission to travel to Atlanta, Georgia, for the National Leadership and Skills Conference. Uh, Shannon Brown's actually gonna be competing in culinary arts, she took first place in state. As well as, uh, yeah, I think it's not here, she, uh, will be competing in baking and pastry arts, uh, she also won the first sixteen. Uh, I, as a traveling as an alternate for excuse me, for restaurant services, got second place, and so I'm gonna was going as, uh, as a spectator for next year, so she will be our first, since next year, for both her, she, so.
Oh, I'm excited, uh, Vice President.
Yes, I'm gonna ask you a normal question, uh, is a chaperone going with you?
I also.
Yeah, I'll take you to chaperones as well as myself.
Great, and, and this is, this is not off topic really, but are you gonna do a fundraiser this year for a paella or whatever, and do you know what it is?
Yes, actually, uh, we're in the process of raising twenty thousand dollars for, for this trip, in this room. Uh, we have a chili cookout coming off, uh, coming up, uh, June second.
June second, where is it gonna be?
That one's gonna be at K-Town.
Okay.
And, uh, I think the cost is twenty-five dollars per person and, uh, there's gonna be a bunch of chefs from our house, who are renowned for their chilies, we, for a time.
Nice, okay.
Good to, right?
From the Rotary, right? Oh, yeah, Rotary actually, we're generous, uh, you know, to, uh, donate the the chili cookout to the house, uh, to the great chefs and towns, which is our, uh, main supportive nonprofit.
Well, congratulations on all the, all that you do for our district and for representing Taos so proudly when you travel. Thank you.
And you guys, we, we guarantee people.
Yeah.
Thank you for, uh, for weathering the storm and I have more meeting and, uh, we'll, we'll try not to, do our best not to oversight this, we'd be glad to get our students home, uh, right away and.
Be a small.
But thank you all.
President, you just referred to the rest of the, you know, your company. Thank you. Not reviewed, you have a question?
Yeah, appreciate it. What time on Sunday, Adam, the, uh?
I start at two P M.
Okay, great.
Good job, and see you all.
Can't wait, thanks.
So, actually.
I guess, uh, another question, I, I don't see any other items of concern on the agenda. In this, I will go ahead and, uh, I think the board asked our superintendent for the regular meeting on the consent agenda, I have hour one to nine. For president, I'm a person for, uh, I recommend that we approve the consent agenda, so, L one to nine, that's, it's with that recommendation, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, uh, matter of fact, we do open role.
Yes, Number King?
Yes.
Secretary TruHill?
Yes.
Vice President Sprague?
Yes.
President Follas?
Yeah. Um, item M, upcoming meeting and agenda items, um, M one, future topics for, uh, our new, the right superintendent. Um, usually, at this time, if the board has any items that would like to consider, uh, for review to be on the next meeting agenda, we need to go over this, sometimes it's abuse, sometimes it's not. Does the board have any?
I do, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't lose track of, um, Joe Gian from New Mexico's Board Association has asked that we adopt the policy for SB one thirty-seven. Um, and the policy advisory is two thirty-eight dash two forty-five. And there, that, that policy is gonna go into effect July first, so our next meeting would be the only time we can do it before.
So the policy advice?
It's, it's NMSB policy advisories, two thirty-eight dash two forty-five, you can have this.
Oh, I got, recently, I saw a email.
So I want to mention that now, so two of the things I wanted to ask for, for instance, about an update, and a, so update, please.
Really, thank you. May I be known, Secretary TruHill?
Um.
I was asked about the Grandparent Program.
Okay.
That is able to do senior program and how do we have that program in our schools? There, we have a grandparent program that are very, we have money to do that in senior program and, and, uh, that we could utilize in our school.
You remember when that woman was candy at the end of some, or things under, she was.
I remember, uh.
And she actually was.
And they keep a hole down the air that she.
Especially very.
Senior, uh, freshman, in the classroom.
Yeah.
Uh, one, uh, 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 particularly those classes that I'm in, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that. Is it, what, uh, what, uh? I talked to I said, I talked to, uh, Senator, uh, we're gonna, we're real estate, we're gonna, well, we're real estate and, uh, yeah, we, we, uh, HR, winter, you know, that, that.
Yeah, we, this is, like. So we're gonna, we're gonna fix this, I'll fix this, Brad. So we're gonna, we're gonna fix this, it's, I'll fix this, Brad. And I'm gonna leave hanging here, I think they gotta have a way to do that. Uh, so, keep us in your prayers.
Right, yeah, there's a detail on the back, all the lab understand, we can have um. About whatever degree and so just, you know, we don't want to stack out. However, I have a lot of resources inside right here, I have some resources out of this.
Uh, so, I did have a request. We have requests from by letter to the senior to look at. In relation to the. Uh, if everything we're working on in the school board training, we have a school board training. Uh, so we could, we could uh. Kind of like the uh, the option of the training of the. Early trainings, kind of just their local product and we did it. Uh, we have, uh. You know, we get any setting for certain meeting, we have a meeting once a month now, some of the months. Uh, beginning with. So Secretary, you have a request, there were a couple of. And then uh, for the. Uh, we, we, we have a order and one of the, one of the.
This is the P that I'm, for one member, which is for us. Um, we have a community, we have to get an annual report.
Um, I'll bring us a memory of the. You don't have any information.
We're willing to meet against the real.
So that, uh, our. All items on the board are, are actual items. I had, um, spoken to the board, I think, uh, part of sending me a, a meeting that. To another day, uh, we get a better, better.
Um, we do have the.
You should be moving today. Okay, uh, so, uh, with that, it's kind of, on consideration of the board, we're gonna do a meeting. Yeah, yeah, I will then make a motion to amend the school board calendar. For the regular board meeting that is scheduled for June nineteenth to be moved. To June eighteenth. And it'll be at the administration building at six P M.
Second.
Got a second from Board Member King, uh, could you have a roll call, please?
Number Concha?
Yes.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary Trivio?
Yes.
Vice President's break?
Yes.
President Fronz?
Yes. The last time when we turned our even items. Second, Vice President's break, roll call?
Number Concha?
Yes.
Number King?
Yes.
Secretary Trivio? Vice President's break? And President Fronz?